Call the Lord, Town of Prescott Valley, regular town council meeting, April 8th, 2021. Welcome everyone. Kind of got a above-average attendance this evening, so that's kind of good, I think. So, hey, we're going to welcome Tony De La Riva down for our invocation. Welcome, sir.
Well, thank you, guys. I do appreciate every one of you, I want you guys to know that, and we pray for you regularly, every one of you guys. I know all of you by name and face. Well, let's pray. Sovereign Lord, you are the King and Creator of heaven and earth, and I am thankful for these civil leaders here in Prescott Valley. You said in your word that these are your servants, that they're ordained by you to punish those who do evil and reward those who do good. And I believe and am thankful that the values represented in the consciences of these men and women reflect those purposes. In a day when words mean whatever opportunists want them to mean, when honesty is a suggestion and justice means punishing our ideological opponents, I pray that it would not be so among these here today. Rather, I pray that integrity and selflessness and wisdom would be with them as they make decisions that most of us will never think about, but they impact our lives. And Lord, your desire is that people everywhere repent and trust in Jesus, who died instead of sinners, to reconcile them to himself. You equip us with the hearts and consciences we need to live quiet, peaceful, hard-working lives before you, and I pray that you would bless this meeting today so that those things would be protected and extended here in Prescott Valley and beyond. And I ask you these things in the name of the King. Amen.
Amen.
Let's, uh, salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, guys.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Kinzinger?
Present.
Councilmember Dickinson?
Here.
Councilmember Heppely?
Here.
Councilmember Packard?
Present.
Councilmember Schumacher?
Here.
Vice Mayor Hunt?
Present.
Mayor Poguda?
Present.
We have a quorum.
Thank you, ma'am. I'm going to jump right into proclamations. First one up is Arbor Day proclamation. Do we have anyone here accepting for Arbor Day? Casey, come on down.
National Arbor Day. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees, and whereas this holiday, called Arbor Day, was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, and whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the na- the nation and the world, and whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, and produce life-giving oxygen and provide habitat for wildlife, and whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and whereas trees in our town increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community, and whereas trees wherever planted are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now therefore, I, Cal Poguda, Mayor of the Town of Prescott Valley, Arizona, do hereby proclaim April 30th, 2021, as Arbor Day in the Town of Prescott Valley, and I urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. And further, I urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this in future generations.
Next one up is Fair Housing Month. Do we have anyone accepting for Fair Housing Month?
Fair Housing Month, April 2021. Whereas the Civil Rights Act of 1968, commonly known as the Federal Fair Housing Act, and the Fair Housing Amendments Act of 1988 prohibit discrimination in the sale, rental, leasing, and financing of housing or land to be used for the construction of housing or in the provision of brokerage services on the basis of race, color, religion, sex, disability, familial status, or national origin. And whereas the 1968 and 1988 Federal Fair Housing Acts declare that it is a national policy to ensure equal opportunities in housing, and whereas April has traditionally been designed, designated, as the Fair Housing Months in the United States. Now therefore, I, Mayor Cal Poguda, of the Town of Prescott Valley, do hereby proclaim April 2021 as Fair Housing Month in the Town of Prescott Valley, and hereby do urge all residents of this community to comply with and show their support for the letter and spirit of the Fair Housing Acts.
We're jumping on to item six, Chamber of Commerce. Mr. Brady Cabral, come on down.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. I don't know if you guys know this or not, but Council Night is my favorite work night of the month. Every month, I look forward to coming here. Part of that is because of these smiling faces and these smiling faces, but most of that is because I love celebrating entrepreneurs in Prescott Valley. Our business community is, is alive and thriving even through the difficult times that we've had this last year, and today I have a living example of that. I have a brand-new business to Prescott Valley who is also a fairly new resident to Prescott Valley. I would like to introduce Michaela Chadwick.
Yes, hello. I'm going to lower this. I'm not as tall as Brady. Well, I'm ecstatic to be here, to see everyone's faces, and to actually be able to see more faces, and just excited to be here in Prescott Valley. So, a little bit about my background and where I'm from. My husband and I and our daughter are from Wyoming. We just moved here in December, and we were brought to this beautiful area because of an opportunity with State Farm. So I opened my agency officially on April 1st, and it's very, very exciting, and we're just thrilled to be here. We chose Prescott Valley because Wyoming's beautiful, it's very outdoorsy, but right now they still have snow on the ground, and we're in summertime. So, we came here for the weather, we came here for the small-town, community vibe, but also allowing more opportunities for our daughter. She's almost two, and we can put her in dance and all these other different activities that are always going on. There's so many events, so many community activities, and that's really what I was looking for in finding a place to really settle down and grow our roots and grow my business. So, that's why we chose it here. And then, as far as choosing State Farm and insurance, I kind of have a family tradition of insurance. My aunt was a State Farm agent for years and years. I worked for her until she retired, and then I also worked for my cousin. But the main reason I decided to get into State Farm and specifically insurance was right after my husband and I bought our first home together, and we're actually high school sweethearts, so it's been a while. But, um, after we bought our home together, he was in an oil field explosion, and he was in the ICU in the burn unit for over a month and a half, almost two months. And I remember thinking, I'm sitting there, I'm 20 years old, we just bought a house, I don't know what's going to happen to him, I don't know what's going to happen to our house, I don't know what's going to happen to our animals, which we have a lot. We have many horses, dogs, cats, et cetera. So, you know, when that happened, I was like, okay, this is important, these are things that not everybody thinks about, talks about. I never want any family to have to worry about financial matters when they need to be taking care of their loved ones. So, that's when I really found insurance to be so valuable. Protecting people's lives is essential, and that's what brought me to State Farm, which brought us to Prescott Valley. So, thank you for taking the time to listen to me today, and I'm very excited to get to know this community.
Where's your office?
Oh, yes. My office is on Robert Road and Lake Shore. I am still learning the names because in Wyoming, we don't even have stoplights, so. And you can stop by our office anytime, and also, um, our website is prescottvalleyins.com, so Prescott Valley Insurance, but prescottvalleyins.com. And if you just want to stop by and meet myself and my one team member, we'd love to have anyone stop by. We're just excited to get to know everyone here.
Nice.
Yes. Thank you, Brady, for bringing me.
Brady, how about a phone number?
A phone number, yes. Our phone number is 928-237-5094.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Self-plug for the chamber while I'm up here. We are very excited about our Team Up to Clean Up event happening the first weekend in May. So, May 1st, come on out, help us clean up Prescott Valley. Get ready for spring. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Brady. Next up is our Student of the Month, and Councilwoman Heppely will be taken away.
All right. We are so excited to have Student of the Month going again. It was on hold, but we're back. The Town of Prescott Valley, in collaboration with the Optimist Club of Yavapai County and Bradshaw Mountain High School, are honoring two outstanding students for the month of March. I'd like to welcome up Rachel Supergan and Colin Streeter.
Hello.
We are recognizing these students because of their school and community engagement. They've been nominated by school staff and instructors from Bradshaw Mountain High School, and the students will read their own biographies.
Howdy. My name is Rachel Supergan, and I am a senior at Bradshaw Mountain High School. So, a couple things that I do at the high school. I am a part of the Advanced Placement Program, so I take a lot of advanced classes that get me credit for college, and I've taken dual enrollment classes through Yavapai College, so I'm getting some college credit because I'm excited to go to college. My dream is to go to Emory Riddle. I want to major in aeronautical science. I want to fly planes, so my goal is to fly commercially and travel the world. Some other stuff I do at the high school, I'm in the Advanced Theater Program. I love acting, and so I've done that all four years. I'm part of the National Honor Society. I'm part of the LINK Program, which is a program that helps the incoming freshmen to the high school. We show them around, we do tutoring, that kind of stuff. And the best thing that I do at the high school is play tennis. I'm, I've been on varsity since freshman year, and this year I'm the captain, and we're having an epic season so far. So, that's a little bit about me.
Hi. My name is Colin Streeter. I'm a senior at Bradshaw Mountain High School as well, while taking AP courses. I'm also a student by president for this year. I'm on the varsity tennis team with Rachel, and I've been the captain for the past three years. On top of playing tennis, I'm also playing on a club team, and we play tournaments around the state around the year. My coaches and my teammates these past four years have taught me invaluable lessons in teamwork and dedication, and if it weren't for them, I would not have found a passion for sport. I only started playing freshman year. At the end of my junior year with all the time off with quarantine, I found a passion for politics and advocacy through Students to Make Action. As a leader on the membership and recruitment team in the state office, I became introduced to people working in something that they're passionate about, and they ignited that same fire in me. Students to Make Action also led me to work on a national senate campaign and eventually co-starting the Political Education Activism Club on campus. My passion for politics will expand beyond high school as I'm incredibly grateful to study political science at UCLA next year. Lastly, I want to thank my teachers for giving this opportunity tonight. For the past four years, I've been lucky enough to have teachers who have strived to push students intellectually while keeping us engaged. It has been their mentorship and enthusiasm that's helped me find my future path, so thank you.
Well, you guys just inspired me, so that was amazing. And Principal Brett Dahl?
Thank you. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers, thank you so much for having us back and, and making it important to celebrate our amazing, amazing students in this community. I continue to be unbelievably impressed. It's so wonderful to have them back and see them five days a week. And on that note, I always, we always go and surprise them in their classes, and it's funny because we walk into a classroom and it could be one of 30 kids because they, they all are really amazing students. But when we thought about these two and them being nominated, it's so impressive to watch them at work. They are, while what they do academically and athletically is super impressive, and we're certainly proud of them for that, who they are as people, watch them interact, watch them act as leaders, watch them, the kindness that they demonstrate to our, not only our community, but their peers and their teachers. We have, we can all learn from them. They are an absolutely perfect representative of Bradshaw Mountain High School, of Prescott Valley, Arizona, of all, you know, what we want in our future leaders, and it is an absolute pleasure. Help me join, or join me in just giving them one more round of applause. They are absolutely amazing. I'm a high-fiver, and I haven't got to do that very much this year, so I took advantage.
Good evening. I'm here tonight to stand in for our President of the Optimist Club, Dr. Butch Miller. I'm the Secretary Treasurer, so I'm kind of his lackey tonight, but it's a thrill to be here because I always like when the council recognizes Students of the Month, and this is, I think, exciting not only for us but for the students as well. And so, I'm here on behalf of the Optimist Club of Yavapai County, the Town of Prescott Valley, as well as Bradshaw Mountain High School, to congratulate these young people and let them know that we're proud of all of you and your achievements, and we expect bigger and better things in the future as well, even if it's at Emory Riddle, flying around. So what we'd like to do is commemorate this evening with just a couple of certificates. I'll give one to April, and she can pass it on to Rachel, and I'll give Colin his. And it says, "The Optimist Club of Yavapai County certifies two all, that Colin Streeter and Rachel Supergan have been named March Student of the Month this day, April 8th, 2021." Congratulations.
Latoya's going to come on down and get some pictures? Outstanding, guys. We're moving on to item 6C, and this is something we've never really done before, and I would like to welcome down some students and a teacher for Liberty Traditional School. And it's, uh, it's actually going to be a little presentation that we're going to get. I believe we'll let the details, let them talk about the details, but it's a Firewise presentation, and it has to do with a kind of a competition that these students did, and they've been invited here, and we're going to hear what they have to say. So, please just give them a round of applause and make them feel welcome.
Hello, everyone. We are the Junior Firefighters, and we're so excited to share our work with you. First of all, for our model, we chose the location on a square mile of Chino Valley because it was very remote and desolate so that we could add some things in to our model. What we decided to add in was a fire department and an evacuation road because we noticed that our square mile didn't have any of these in them.
To prevent fires from happening, we recommended on having monthly vegetation checks. We also wanted to put in more fire hydrants to allow firefighters to get more water, to get water faster and not have to travel long distances for it. Another thing is we wouldn't recommend, we recommended on having mandatory checkings on smoke detectors. This is not only for the houses but also for the fire department.
A wise idea our group came up with is RCR, or Restore, Cultivate, and Rebuild. It is an organization dedicated to cleaning up the aftermath of a destructive fire, and it would give the community an opportunity to be involved with their city more helpfully.
Thank you so much for listening to our Firewise Plan. We're so grateful for the opportunity to help make our town more firewise. Have a good night.
All right, hang on a minute. Right? So, Mom, Dad, where are we at? Raise our hands. So, let's give a round of applause to the parents that put these together. You guys, you guys did a great job, and I'm going to let Council start off on just saying a few words. Councilwoman Dickinson?
Well, I'm very impressed with these young people and their presentation this evening, and along with their presentation last week, I understand, was the Fire Prevention Week, and so this went along with that, and thank you so much for your presentation this evening.
You guys did a great job, and you hit all aspects: prevention, cleanup, just helping firefighters, helping people. You thought of it all, so good, good job. Congratulations. Thank you.
So, Ms. Ellie and your classmates there, welcome to the Town Council. Thank you very much for an excellent presentation. You guys all did a great job speaking, and I'm really proud of you in the way you did your research and you verbally presented, not to mention the rendering that you have there. It's very good. Thank you, guys. Congratulations.
Very impressive folks, young folks, it's young folks like you that help the community understand. It is so great to see youth out here doing this, and I appreciate it. We really appreciate it because we are in a Firewise community. We have to follow the rules to some extent, so thank you very much for being here and a very good presentation.
Yes, we look at you, we see leaders for the next generations, and that's amazing. So, thank you for taking the stand and doing what's right, and so many people today don't know what they would do in a situation like that, and they'll remember your words, so it's really important that you think that way. Thank you.
I want to thank you again for doing the presentation tonight. You did a very, very good presentation. One of the things, as people up here in the Town Council, we're all aging, and we all know that there's going to be people moving up. As they, as you folks grow up, you will be future leaders of the future leaders of this community, and you're showing your strength in what can be done now at this age, and I think you guys are setting the bar high for yourself also, which is good. And again, thank you again for doing this presentation, thanks for doing the research, and thanks to the parents for letting you be able to get together with us. So again, congratulations, a wonderful presentation.
We forgot to introduce them, but if, when I call your name, if you just want to go to the front, we have Jackson. Ellie? Kira? She just whispered over, she better, he better say my name right, is what she said, so. I feel good that I nailed that one. London. One more round of applause for these guys.[645.66][645.66](APPLAUSE). Next up is Staff Service Award for Dawn Mosher. Yeah. Come on down, Dawn. I didn't see you there.
Congratulations, Dawn Mosher, on five years of exceptional service as a senior permit technician to the town of Prescott Valley. The tasks assigned to the building departments are critical and complex, and Dawn has always delivered above and beyond in her work. With clients, she provides outstanding customer service, paying close attention to people's welfare and never compromising safety. Clients are always thanking her when they leave the front counter. Dawn is always efficient and leads by example, performing tasks professionally into the best of her abilities, while also being flexible and an excellent team player. Thank you, Dawn Mosher, for five years of hard work and exemplary service. We look forward to working many more years with you.
Round of applause for Dawn.[759.44][759.44](APPLAUSE). Dawn, I just wanted to say that you are truly a beam of sunshine down there. Whenever I see you, you're always friendly, you're always smiling, you make everyone that interacts with you just feel at ease and pleasant, and you're truly an asset to us, and I appreciate that. And, what, do you have a few things? Is that why you're up here? I mean, you're standing here, so I just assumed you had something to say.
I just, I just wanted to thank her for her five years of dedicated service to the town of Prescott Valley, and particularly the community development department.
All right. Dawn, your few words?
Just wanted to let you guys know that I've served the town of Prescott Valley for more than thirty years when I first moved here, and even though I don't technically live in this town, I'm about three miles outside of our limit, this is my hometown, and I love it here.
We'll start on the end. Councilman Kissinger, welcome back.
Thank you. I'm glad to be back. I was gone for the last two weeks, did a trip back to Iowa to visit family, and my mother, who's going to turn ninety-five, so I'm glad to be back here. It was good to go, but it's better to get back home. But I wanted to share with you, about three weeks ago, I had stopped at the landings of Prescott Valley, and Georgiana Mendez had been here recently and spoke to us about the facility. She had invited us out to stop by out to look at, look at it, so I spoke with her, and she is, Georgiana Mendez is the admission director. Then I also spoke with Gail Hip, she's the executive director, and they're both great people. It's a beautiful facility. If you get a chance to stop out there, there will be a ribbon cutting on April 22nd, 11 o'clock, so if you want to put that on your schedule, that would be great. But again, it's a great facility. I don't want to rush myself into that facility, but I could be the next home, beyond the home I'm at right now, but hopefully there's a home between the one that's, when you're horizontal, I guess, right? But one other thing I want to remind you, Real Hope Incorporated of Prescott Valley has been doing food giveaways every Saturday from about ten, no, I'm sorry, about from about nine to two o'clock in the Pruitt parking lot, on the west side of the parking lot. So again, it will be there this Saturday, and also, I just noticed in the news today, I think Manzanita will be across the street this weekend also giving out food in front of the old Elberson Building, which is going to be the new Heights Church. So those two things will be going on this Saturday for, for people that are in need of food. You might want, if you don't have any people that, that could take advantage of that opportunity, please remind them to come up out on Saturday. Thank you again.
Thank you, sir. Councilwoman?
Well, I know that they've already spoken about the team up to clean up on May 1st, and everybody who would like to volunteer, you don't have to be super into wanting to do it all, but every little bit helps, and so all the volunteers are needed and wanted. So thank you, everybody, and let's clean up our town. Thank you.
Councilwoman? Vice Mayor?
Good evening, everybody. I was able to be on KQNA this week with Superintendent Pot Haste. He was here, he's gone now. Anyway, with Nikki Indikovich to talk about the dangers of illegal fentanyl. First, more than the majority of our students don't use drugs, so that's the good news. Fentanyl's a powerful synthetic opioid like morphine, but fifty to a thousand times more potent. If you have an interest in learning more or helping stomp out fentanyl use in PV, join us at the Prescott Valley Illegal Fentanyl Working Group next Wednesday at 4:00 PM at the Prescott Valley Training Room. Yesterday, I got the privilege of judging the Matforce poster contest, and believe me, this was not an easy job. We have very talented kids across the county, so look for the winners soon at matforce.org. Do you know an awesome teen or even one who might be at risk? Encourage them to sign up to be a part of the Prescott Valley Library Teen Advisory Board. More info is available at pvlib.net/teens, or call Autumn, our fabulous teen librarian, at 759-3038. The group meets Mondays at 3:30 in the library. It's very important that we get kids out there between the ages of fourteen and eighteen, because we need to hear from them. I was at Arizona Downs today, and some exciting news, live horse racing is in Prescott Valley. Will begin June and run through September for a total of thirty-two race days, beginning around 4:00 PM on Tuesdays and Wednesdays. I can't wait. You can even make a $2 bet, so you don't have to be moneybags. I would also like to welcome Mr. Weiss, who had the opportunity to meet today. He's the new manager of the track in Prescott Valley.
Councilwoman? Councilwoman Dickinson?
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for being here. Couple of things this evening. Tomorrow, Friday, April 9th, at the Veterans Memorial at the Prescott Valley Civic Center, the U.S. Submarine Force will be celebrating their 121st birthday tolling of the boats ceremony. This is open to the public, and it will be out here in the civic center where the flags are, the military flags are, and the Walk of Honor. I happen to have a couple of bricks in that Walk of Honor for my father and my uncle. And anyway, just wanted to remind you, and this is again at 9:00 AM. Pardon me, I got the time wrong. The event will take place at noon on Friday, April 9th. The other item that I have for you is the Prescott Valley Police Foundation is having a ball drop on April 25th, and this will be, the balls will be dropped onto the green at Stone Ridge Golf Course from atop a CAFMA, or Central Arizona Fire and Medical Ladder Truck, and the balls cost $10 each. They have 500 balls to be sold, and there are still some balls left. I just spoke with Kay, who is in charge of this. The winner gets 50% of ball drop proceeds, and you need not be present to win. You can either contact Kay at 928-775-4002, or you can go to the Police Foundation website, and you would make checks out to the Prescott Valley Police Foundation, the 2021 Ball Drop. And in conjunction with this, they are having their fifth annual, pardon me, fifth annual golf tournament, and that is sold out. She wanted me to emphasize that the golf tournament is sold out, but the ball drop is still available. Thank you.
All right, moving on. Consent agenda. All matters listed under consent agenda are considered routine by the Town Council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately for discussion and possible action. Council, we've all had a chance to review our packet. If there's no questions, I'll entertain a motion, please.
I recommend approval of the consent calendar by electronic vote.
I second it.
Clerk, please call the vote. Thanks, ma'am. Moving on to new business, appointment of Barbara Bayless to the Arts and Culture Commission. Vice Mayor?
Come on up, Barbara. One voting position on the Arts and Culture Commission became open when Frankie Gibson resigned, effective September 1st. Ms. Gibson was first appointed to the commission in January 2011 to a partial term. Barbara Bayless is currently serving on the Arts and Culture Commission as a non-voting position with a term ending January 30th, 2021. Myself, councilmembers Packard and Kinsinger are recommending she now be appointed, reassigned to a voting position, because I hear you're awesome.
Well, thank you.
So, thank you for your service, congratulations, and do you have a couple of things to say to us?
I'm looking forward to this opportunity.
Great. You get to work with magnificent Bella, so you're lucky.
Yes, I do.
So with that, I'd like to recommend approval of Barbara Bayless to a voting position on the Arts and Culture Commission by electronic vote.
I second.
Clerk, please call the vote.
That passes unanimously, Mayor.
Thanks, ma'am. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item 10B, appointment of Diane Moore to the Arts and Culture Commission. Diane, come on down.
Oh, no, Miss Diane. Okay, so one voting position on Arts and Culture Commission became open when Link resigned, effective February 2021. She'd been on the commission for a long time, and we appreciate her service. She even served as chair. The vacancy was advertised, and we got one applicant, and myself and councilmembers Packard and Kinsinger conducted an interview, are now recommending Ms. Diane Moore, who has a lot of experience in construction management, so we're excited to get her on Arts and Culture. Do you have a couple of things to say?
Just happy for the opportunity. Thank you for the phone call that started the dance, and I'm looking forward to the experience.
Awesome.
Awesome. I'd like to recommend that the council appoint Diane Moore to the vacant position on Arts and Culture Commission.
I'll second.
Clerk, please call the vote. Ma'am, congratulations, and thank you again for taking this opportunity. Item 10C, appointment of Peter Peterson to the Parks and Rec Commission. I believe Councilman Kissinger, are you taking this one?
Yes. Come on up, Pete.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council.
Welcome, sir.
Thank you. One position on the Parks and Rec Commission became open when Buzz Gummer resigned, effective January 21st, 2021. Mr. Gummer was first appointed to this commission on November the 17th, 2016, to a partial term. He served three consecutive terms, with the third having a term renewal date of June 30th, 2023. The vacancy was advertised, and two applications were received. Vice Mayor Lori Hunt, councilmember Don Packard, and myself conducted the interviews and are recommending the appointment of Pete, goes by Pete Peterson, with a, to a term with a renewal date of June 30th, 2023. Pete, is there anything you want to say?
Sure. New to the area, retired January 2nd, moved here from Minnesota, and got down here the 14th, so I like the area.
And you were in law enforcement?
Yeah, I was a retired police supervisor from Minnesota.
Okay, all right.
So you already flunked retirement by just jumping into this, right?
I have time to volunteer.
Sounds good, sir. Thank you very much.
I would like to make a motion to the Town Council to authorize the appointment of Pete Peterson to the Parks and Rec Commission, and with a renewal date of June 2023, by electronic vote.
I'll second.
Clerk, please call the vote. I'm sorry, sir, where did you say you moved from? Where'd you move from?
Minnesota. Oh, Minnesota, I'm sorry. There's a lot of snow down here in Arizona?
Yeah, that's why, you came with your snowmobile, right?
Keep telling everyone that, that's all.
That passes unanimously, Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, Pete wrote us a very nice letter the first week he was here, complimenting the town and particularly our police department, and how much the town loved the police department, and that's one reason why he was here, because he was not favored in Minnesota where he was by residents.
Defunding the police and all that other stuff.
Fair enough. Well, welcome, sir.
All right, thank you. Look forward to working with everyone.
Thanks, Pete.
Moving on, item 10D, reappointment of Darlene Packard to the Personnel Board. Vice Mayor?
Come on up, missy. So I get the opportunity of speaking about one of my favorite people in town. On April 25th, 2001, Darlene Packard's term on the Personnel Board as a citizen member comes due for renewal. Fortunate for us, she's reapplied, and councilmembers Packard and Kinsinger, as well as myself, recommend her for reappointment, term renewal date of April 25th, 2023. What do you have to say?
I love our town. It's a great place to be.
Yeah.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you for all that you've done and all that you continue to do.
So with that, I'd like to recommend approval of the appointment of Darlene Packard, renewing her position on the Personnel Board. By electronic vote.
Hang on a second on the vote, clerk. Councilman Packard, are you going to recuse from this?
Oh, you need to.
Let's just, let the record show that Councilman Packard's recusing for, you want to say personal reasons? You know her? Okay, so let's just, let's just put it for that. And then I'll, clerk, I believe we have a second?
I second.
Now, clerk, please call the vote.
That passes.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right, moving on. Item 10F, bid for trash disposal service. Mr. Davis? Where are we at? Oh, I'm sorry, we skipped, but just sit in front, you'll be fine.
Ryan here.
He'll be quick.
Reappointment of Ryan Judy to Personnel Board. Councilman Kissinger?
On April 25th, 2021, Ryan Judy's term at Prescott, I'm sorry, as Personnel Board, Personnel Board, as an exempt employee member, will come due for renewal. He has submitted a renewal application letter requesting reappointment. Ryan was first appointed to a full term on this board, June 21st, 2007, as an exempt employee member, and this reappointment will be his eighth consecutive term. Vice Mayor Lori Hunt, councilmember Don Packard, and myself recommend a reappointment of Ryan Judy to, for a term with a renewal date of April 25th, 2023. Ryan, is there anything you would like to say?
Mayor, Council, appreciate the support. What did you just appoint me to? No, okay. To appreciate the opportunity to serve, luckily, this is a board that very rarely meets. On the fourteen years that I've been on there, we've only heard two cases, so it's a testament to our employees and our Human Resources Department, so thank you.
Very good. I would like to make a motion-
Very good. I would like to make a motion to reappoint Ryan Judy to the Personnel Board as an exempt employee member for a term with a renewal date of April 25th, 2023 by electronic vote.
I'll second.
Clerk, please call the vote.
That passes unanimously.
Thanks, ma'am. Now, moving on. 10F, bid for trash disposal service, Cleanup Day 2021, Mr. Norm Davis. Welcome, sir.
Thank you, Mayor, council. The item we have before you this evening is for the award of contract disposal for our Cleanup Day. That's going to be Saturday, May 1st, basically here in a month. You heard quite a lengthy presentation last week of all the partnerships that we put together. We put up the flyer that's going out in the April Town News. In addition, we had Marnie with Prescott Valley Chamber come up. I know Councilwoman mentioned earlier about the Team Up to Cleanup event, a very popular event. They are celebrating their 25th silver anniversary of their cleanup event. So we've been doing that partnership with them for many years. So this cleanup event is about partnerships. We talked about Yalpuy County participates with us. They pay their fair share of unincorporated residents that come to the Cleanup Day on Saturday, May 1st. So really, any area trash, collectibles, whatever people wanna dump off is welcome that day. So we run a very successful event. And the item we have before you is for the disposal services. Once it's open to residents at 8:00, when we shut the gate at 4:00, then the contractor comes in and hauls away all of the stuff to a landfill for permanent disposal. So that's what I have. We talked quite a bit of work study, but happy to answer any further questions you may have.
Counsel, any more questions for Mr. Davis that we didn't cover last week? If that's the case, then I'll take a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to award a bid to the low bidder, Patriot Disposal Incorporated, for disposal services for Cleanup Day, Spring 2021, and enter into a contract in the amount of, sorry, $67,692.50 by electronic vote.
I second.
Clerk, please call the vote.
That passes unanimously, Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. Moving on, item 11. Thanks, Norm. Comments from the public. Consideration and discussion of general unscheduled comments from the public. Those wishing to address the council need not request permission in advance. Any such remarks shall be addressed to the council as a whole and not to any member thereof. Such remarks shall be limited to three minutes unless additional time is granted by the mayor. At the conclusion of the unscheduled comments, individual members of the council may respond to the item addressed at the discretion of the mayor, or they may ask that the town manager review the matter or ask that the matter be placed on a future agenda. Folks, with that being said, I know we have a limited audience at this moment, is there anyone that wishes to say a few words?
I have one speaker card from Mary Hunter.
Mary, come on down. Welcome, ma'am.
Good day. I was gonna speak on the 1st of April. Unfortunately, there are no speakers then. However, I wanted to thank you so much for all the hard work you guys do here, especially Norm, because of the viewpoint drive extension. It took us five minutes to get here today. Of course, my husband just goes, "Pshh." So I just wanted to let you know that I really appreciate it and I've been praying for Jerry Schumacher as well.
Ma'am, thank you very much. And so she was like 10 seconds into that and threw you under the bus. There's two officers in the back. She's already telling you how, telling everyone how fast you drive, so.
Actually, it was 15 minutes. Thank you very much.
Nicely done, ma'am. Thank you for coming.
Love you, Mary.
Clerk, anyone else?
No, sir.
And if there's anyone else, I know we, like I said, we've just started with this, filling out the form. So if anyone else would like to say anything, here's your opportunity. If not, I look for, we're on item 12, I look for a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
I second.
Clerk, please call the vote.
That passes, Mayor.
Thanks, ma'am. Folks, have a great night. Be safe.